Hi, welcome to the scene. Today, we're going to give you an interesting perspective on some of your city council candidates.
Hmm, you think it'll sway your vote?
Hmm, maybe.
And hot topics.
I'm Shawna.
And I'm Kristi.
And I'm Charles.
And we approve this episode of the Scene.
Hi, Salina, and welcome to the scene. I'm Shawna Carter, and I'm here with Charles Ross and Kristi Mai. And we're really excited to be here tonight. The first thing we're going to talk about is something a little bit dirty. Are you ready? It's the poo topic. Yes, the poo topic. Someone's going around Akron, Ohio, pooping on cars. What is up with that?
It's like Sasquatch.
It could be, although they do have a photo of him, and I don't think he looks like that.
Well, there are several photos of Sasquatch, too, but it's...
But they haven't caught him.
Though.
No. So, why do you think he's doing this?
Oh, I don't know. Man, he is mean. How awful. What would you do?
Well, it's odd, because when someone finally reported it, then all these other people came forward. So, what were they thinking?
Their safety in numbers.
Well, I know, but what were they thinking? Like, are we the only one that's getting pooped on here? Are we being picked out of the crowd because we've done something wrong? What's the deal? So, they interviewed this guy, and not only does the culprit poop on the car, but then he smears it all around and puts it on the mirrors and makes it impossible for the person to even, you know, drive the vehicle unless you go and get it washed.
Could you imagine?
I can't imagine that.
No, Mr. Poop, that would be so awful.
I think it's good.
Why do you think it's good?
I mean, before, I mean, if we look at it from before, it used to be that you put the bag on the front porch, you filled it up, and then you rang the doorbell, and then you watched them walk out and step in it. So, now, and, you know, you would stand some distance away, and you could, you know, they'd get it, get right in it.
So, do you think Mr. Poopy Sasquatch is, like, standing behind a tree, watching people come out to their cars and noticing?
Well, did you see the, did you see the photo of him?
Yes.
I mean, they didn't show it all, but you know, you've got this, you know, this, this look that he's giving everybody. So, they're trying to figure out in the community who this is. What is he going to say when they confront him about this?
Thrill.
He's doing it for the thrill.
The thrill.
Oh, I think, I think he's doing...
Excitement.
Revenge.
Revenge?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I know people who don't even poop in, like, a public restroom. Can you imagine just going up to somebody's car and like, okay, just going to do it right here? I don't know. I think he's a little bit sick.
Aiding and abutting.
So, what, they caught, no, wait, did they catch him pooping right on the spot?
Camera, yeah.
Yes.
He's on, he's on somebody's surveillance camera, doing the deed.
Wow.
Yeah.
It reminds me of that movie, The Help. Did you see that?
Uh-uh.
Where they fired the maid, and the maid, to get back, pooped in a pie and gave it to her, and told the woman who fired her, after she ate the whole pie, what was in it.
Well, that's disgusting.
I know. It must have been where he got the idea.
Could be.
I, I think we learned all kinds of ideas early, anyway. I mean, I look back to my high school years, and I remember when I was a freshman, a few years back.
Don't tell me you pooped on a car.
No, we didn't. We put a rat in the teacher's coffee.
Oh.
And then, when he drank it, we all sit in there and just laughed. I mean, it was, it was fun.
Oh, how awful.
A real rat?
A real rat. A real rat.
Oh, man. I, I never did anything that bad to anyone.
In college, I had a neighbor who would get upset if somebody parked in her parking spot at the apartment complex, would go out and potty, not poop, but potty on the hood of cars.
Wow.
I made sure never to park in her spot.
Well, that would teach ya.
I know.
Yeah, quick.
Yeah, quick. Okay, well, enough of this poo talk. We have a, a real, a topic tonight, don't we?
We do, we do.
We do.
We'll have to shift through.
That's right. A lot of things to, what, did you say?
Wade through.
Oh, wade through, okay.
Hey, we're missing somebody.
Oh, he's on assignment.
Oh, Jeff.
I know, I knew we were missing somebody, because I feel like I'm caught in a crossfire.
Yeah, the blonde crossfire going on over here.
That's right.
You know, I kind of like this. Usually, it's me between you and Jeff. Now, it's you between me and Kristi.
That's right.
I like that, I like that.
Don't make us mad. I know where you parked.
Jeff will be back with us next time.
Yeah.
Yes.
Hey, welcome back. So, today, we are going to talk about a little experiment that we decided to do here on the scene. We have come up with 10 questions, and we ask our city commission candidates to participate in this experiment with us, to try to find out if you vote solely on the, the platform that the candidate stands for, or if you know a little bit about their personal background and some personal things about them, if that could sway your vote. So, let's get started and talk about Aaron Householder. Aaron was asked this question. What form of education, training, or experience qualifies you for a city commission seat? And what did he say, Charles?
He replied, 25 years as a business owner, four years as a planning commissioner, four years as a city commissioner, and mayor, which he is now, owner of rental properties, which can give quite a bit of insight, six years of law enforcement, that's one of the things I didn't know, and that job really shows you another side of life.
So, Aaron's been around the block a little bit.
He's pretty well-rounded.
But he left his realtor part out.
Oh, how do you feel about that, Charles?
He was a realtor.
Oh, ouch.
And the reason I know that is because I actually, when I first started, he was in the same office as me, so I know he was a realtor. And so, I, and Aaron, I still, I love you and everything, but some, sometimes how he votes, I think he forgets where he came from.
So, why do you think he left that out of his qualifications?
Maybe he figures that owning rental property...
Is the same as being a realtor?
Maybe that's what he, maybe that, I'm just trying to...
Realtor, realty property, all the same.
Yeah, well...
It's under the same umbrella.
They, actually, there is property managers which do rental properties.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That are realtors, so...
I think he's pretty well-rounded. I think he's rubbed elbows with probably the elite of Salina, and then also being in law enforcement, he has seen the scum of Salina. I think he has got a, probably, a pretty good opinion and view of our community.
Yes, I would agree with that. Balance of both sides.
Agreed.
So, the next thing we ask him is, what do you see as the most urgent need in our community?
He says, "I don't think anything is necessarily urgent, but we really need to take care of our infrastructure before it gets much, much worse. It isn't bad, but if we wait too long, it will be a big issue."
Hmm. So, that's a pretty broad answer.
It's pretty vague.
Political.
Very political.
That's a, I don't see too many things wrong, but there are some things that aren't right. Not going to point at any one thing, but that leaves it open for discussion. Okay.
And actually, he's the bear, so, wow. That makes you really think.
Maybe there, maybe he just didn't have a whole page to write on what he thinks is the urgent needs of the community, right?
Exactly.
So, we ask him, what do you like most about Salina? And he said, "People's dedication to the community." What do you think about that?
Um, I think that's a, that's a great answer. However, I feel like it's the same people who are volunteering and being a part of the community and giving back. I think that we need to work at getting more people involved, starting maybe with the high schools and even going all the way down to the elementary schools.
Not even only the schools, but just the, the regular working people out there that don't have the free time to be really involved with the community. We need to get them involved, pull them in. If it's nothing more than doing something on Saturdays, you know, when they have that time off to be involved in the community, community, community. I mean, especially if you work, you can't, you know, you can't be at certain meetings and all that kind of stuff, so...
Right, right. I think one thing we, we kind of talked about was the fact that it's the same people who tend to give their time over and over again.
Right.
You know, the same people are room mothers, the same people are volunteering at the hospital, you know? If, if we could get more people involved, and maybe if Aaron was focused on that a little bit more, like you said, something in the schools to get...
Sure.
To get kids motivated to, to volunteer and be involved in the community.
Right. Start them young, and it's, let them know it's not really an option. It's your duty to your community to help out as much as possible.
Absolutely. So, here's an interesting question. This is one that Jeff came up with, and if you all watch our show and you know Jeff, you'll understand exactly why this question was asked by Jeff.
Yes.
Okay. You're walking in the woods, and you see an animal. What kind of animal is it? How do you react with the animal?
And if you watched the show last week, or the last show, Jeff asked me this very same question. So, what he's looking for here is a personality trait. So, if you're walking in the woods and you see an animal, the size of the animal is going to determine how, the size of your problems. So, if you choose an elephant, obviously, you've got giant problems, and if you choose a snail, then you've got small problems. And then, what you do with this animal determines how you, how you solve your problems, how you come at your problems. So, this was an interesting show, an interesting topic last week, and I love that we're bringing it back, and I love that the candidates had no idea how they were answering this.
No idea. It wasn't really a trick question, but I think it is kind of interesting how the responses came out on this. So, here's what Aaron said. "I see a monkey." Because, hey, everybody loves a monkey. How do I interact? Well, the only way possible, of course. I get an accordion, and I take the show on the road.
I love that answer.
Yay!
And why, why do you think he answered it? I think he answered that like that, because he's a musician, and that's what he does. So, that's, that's how he answered that question. And you, and yet, if you think, you see monkeys doing the dance, and so, I think this is a, this, this answer is given based off of what Aaron actually does.
Well, I love that the way he solves his problem is he kind of dances around it, maybe he listens to music, he meditates, he focuses, and then he's able to handle it and, and solve it. I, I think it's really great.
Yeah. I like this answer. I, I thought it was definitely not a political answer. It was, it was just a gut feeling he had at the time, and that's kind of what we were looking for here, just, you know, nothing too thought out, whatever comes to your mind first. Excellent answer.
Agreed.
No.
No.
Charles.
Hi, Charles.
I did not agree with it's an excellent answer. I think it's a good answer. I think he could have gave us a better answer, but I will...
It's a silly question.
I can go with it.
It's a silly question.
It is.
Apparently, Kristi and I can relate more to this answer than you can.
Jeff.
No.
Jeff.
I knew I missed Jeff.
He's on assignment. That's right. I know where you parked.
So, how does Aaron relax after a tough day?
He says, "Relax." What is that word? Ooh.
Yeah.
Sounds pretty busy.
Aaron, you need to bring it down a notch. Dude, get out on your back porch, do something fun. You got to relax. If you want to lead the community, you got to find a way to, you know, kind of kick back a little bit and take in some sun and, you know...
Well, how do, okay, wait, you know, I'm, I got asked again. How, how do you know? Maybe he doesn't realize that he's relaxing.
How do you not realize that?
Well, because if he's, if he's playing music, he's doing something, but that could be relaxing. I just, I just had a client come to me yesterday, and he said that he actually works on houses, and that's how he relaxes. He says that calms everything in his body when he's working on a house.
Well, then, I think his answer should have been, "I listen to music. I play the guitar." From this, I see that Aaron doesn't relax.
But he may not know that it's relaxing.
Well, and I think it ties into the question before. So, he gets an accordion, and he takes that show on the road. Maybe that's his way of relaxing. He plays music, and he dances.
Come on, little monkey.
Yeah. He just doesn't know.
He just doesn't know.
Now, now, that's good.
Yeah.
Jeff, stay in Texas. No, not, no, Jeff.
No, we love you, Jeff.
We ask Aaron this question. If you could select one person to meet tomorrow, who would it be and why? Kristi, what did he say?
I would like to meet my grandpa on my mom's side again. I was pretty young when he died, and I wish I could get to know him more. I always liked the way he, I always liked the way he had about him, always working in the garage fixing and making things.
Oh, I think that's good.
Yeah. Respect for elders, understanding that, you know, you can really get a lot out of interacting with that person, a lot of knowledge, a lot of insight. Yeah.
And actually, to see where he came from.
Right. There you go.
Your roots.
Yeah, that's...
So, maybe you were a little harsh on him before about not knowing where he came from, or not remembering where he came from.
I said he didn't remember up here, but down here, this is, I mean, I mean, I don't know if you could get a more personal...
Right.
...answer than that.
Yeah, very personal. And the last thing that we're going to share with you about Aaron is, we ask him, if you could be a cartoon character, who would it be and why?
Some might argue that I am a cartoon character.
Well, I, his Facebook emblem is like a cartoon character, so...
Is it?
I'm just going to say that.
I'll have to check that out. I didn't know that.
I, um, hmm.
Huh.
Aren't we all, though?
But then, in one way, he kind of avoided the question, but he's good. He's, because he's a politician.
He avoided the question a little bit, but you know what? You know, who does you better than you, right? So, if he thinks that he's a cartoon character in his own right, I'll give him that.
That's right.
All right. Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you.
Very much for answering these questions for us. And now, we are going to talk a little bit about Mr. Carl Ryan.
Mm-hmm.
So...
I'll go ahead and read the questions.
Great. Let's start with...
Question number one?
Yes, let's do that.
What form of education, training, and/or experience qualifies you for a city commissioner seat?
Wow. So, Carl has been around a while. What did he say, Charles?
Well, the best thing that he said, now, mind you, I'm a South graduate.
Me, too.
A graduate, but he said, "I graduated from Salina Central in exceptional class of 72." Not so good. And I am, and I, I am graduate of University of Kansas, University of Kansas School of Business, and I hold an additional degree, wow, mortuary science. And then, he goes on to give some work experience, and then, he's, he's on the planning commission, a representative of the Board, Board of Zoning Appeals, and he has a lifetime knowledge of the community. Well, of course, because he's even from here.
Right.
And our company has 100-year historical perspective of the culture, business, and conference in Salina.
Yeah. That's quite a repertoire of, of experience.
Pretty nice laundry list.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, really good. You know, Carl has been around a long time, and definitely, I think, the family business has a really good reputation.
Yeah.
You know, it's really grounded in the community. And I think that does give you a, a good experience just dealing with people, especially the way he has to deal with people.
Right.
In that type of a business, you have to be very compassionate. You have to listen. You have to, you, you become a member of their family for a short period of time, and you also get to know their extended family and reach out to more people. So, I think he's in touch with a lot of people in town.
Sure, and it takes a special kind of person to be able to handle all those emotions at one time.
Absolutely. So, let's move on to the next question. Let's, we ask Carl, what do you like most about Salina?
The people of Salina are great. We have the important asset, the gift of community continuity. We have Midwestern, middle-class values. We have networks of people to go on to. People know you here, they care about you, they, and they want to give you a positive vibe and a leg up.
I think that's a good answer.
It is a good answer. I, you know, I think that that's great that he's gotten that perspective from, you know, living in Salina and living in the Midwest. You know, the Midwest gets a bad rap sometimes.
Yeah, it does.
We're slow. You know, we're, we're behind the times. We're, you know, we need to be a little bit more with it, so to speak. People don't understand that sometimes not being always on top of the newest fad is kind of charming in a way.
It really is.
And I think he's captured that here.
Right.
But actually, I mean, some people may say that, but then, there's other people that, that say a lot of good things. And then, and as you can see, we got a lot of people from California moving to...
We do.
Salina, Kansas. So, it, it can't be, you know, it's, it's something that's drawing them here. And then, those, the old saying, which I've seen since, and I've been here quite a while, too, but there's a lot of people will leave here, and then, they end up right back here.
Right.
So, it's, I mean, even me, I thought it was a great place to raise a family. So, I, I think once you, you've had the experience of being here, it's great, and you realize it's great. And just like the people from California that move here, where they've had the experience of a whole different world to come to a town like this, and I could tell you, we saw a lot of houses to people who come from California.
Hmm, interesting.
Yeah.
It does have a positive vibe, I agree.
Yeah, I agree, it does, too. So, we also ask Carl...
You're walking in the woods.
...the walking in the woods question. Go!
So, what animal do you think Carl sees, and how is he going to interact with it? He says hummingbirds. They fascinate me, and I have been trying to attract them to my backyard for some time. You must sit very still when you watch them, but they will never, but they will come very near, okay, but they will come very near for you to see what marvelous gifts they have been endowed with. So, if you sit very still, they're, they'll come near? Is that what he's saying?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Yes. So, hummingbirds are small.
They are small.
Okay, so, his problems are small.
And he also, and he watches them.
And he watches the problems.
That's what I do.
Yes, and he's fascinated by them. Uh-huh. He doesn't really do anything to, to really get rid of the problem, right?
No, he just watches them.
He just wants to feed it.
Get close to them.
And be fascinated by it.
Be still.
And it's marvelous.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, okay.
It is. It's pretty great. I love it.
That's our interpretation, Carl. Nobody else's. So, how do you relax after a tough day?
Great answer. Go ahead, Charles. You meet them there, don't you?
Spin class.
Spin class at the Y?
Spin class at the YMCA. I don't know what the spin class is, but, uh, spin class.
You don't meet them there every morning, 5:00 a.m.?
No.
Oh.
No.
No?
No.
Oh.
I need to.
Spin class is when you ride bikes.
Or a bike ride, well, why, oh, he says, "Or a bike ride around Salina."
Right, so...
So, indoors or outdoors?
Indoors or outdoors.
Yeah, okay. I never heard it called spin class.
Yeah. So, apparently, apparently, he is...
Exercising.
He's physically fit.
Definitely.
Definitely tuned into that.
Pretty amazing.
Yeah. You know, I, I can relate to this, not the spin class part, but to relax after a tough day, go for a walk. I mean, there's nothing more relaxing than just getting outside and taking a long walk, clearing your head. I can imagine him doing that on a bike ride as well.
Definitely, definitely.
Yeah, I can relate. Yep, definitely.
I can.
You don't have to relate to everything.
I don't.
I guess you won't be voting to him, voting for him based on that, right?
No, I'm saying, I, if that's the way he relaxes, that's a great thing. I just can't relate to it. I mean, for me, relaxing is like praying, you know? And when I'm in my closet praying, that's where I'm relaxing.
You pray in your closet?
Yeah.
Do you pray or meditate?
In my, in my own little space.
I love it.
Wow.
So...
Okay, that's something we've learned about Charles today.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Good for you.
So, we also ask, if you could select one person to meet tomorrow, who would it be and why?
And he says Dwight Eisenhower. He is considered our local boy and was one of our country's greatest leaders. I like it, I like it that he had, that he was from a family of all boys, as I am. Wow.
Mm-hmm.
And was a pioneer in the civil rights, the formation of the NASA and the interstate highway system where Salina makes its home at the crossroads. Wow.
Yeah.
Good answer.
So, I feel like this is really a very honest answer. I mean, I think that he's thought about this a lot. You know, I mean, you don't just go, okay, they're asking me this question, let me pull up a list of famous people that I could throw out there and, you know, make it all look good. I think that he's really thought about this and that he really would enjoy meeting this I think that he's really thought about this and that he really would enjoy meeting this person. So I can definitely make a connection with that.
I think it's a good answer.
Yeah, it is a good answer.
So we threw another question out there, which we didn't share with you on our last candidate, but again, this is another Jeff question and as I read this, you will understand why. If there was a zombie apocalypse and your child was a zombie, would you kill it to put it out of its misery or keep it alive in hopes of a cure? Now, there is a method to our madness here, isn't there?
Yes, of course.
So what did he say?
He says, really? So what would be the point of waiting out for a cure? We are all only on this earth a temporary time before we reunite spirituality.
Wow.
Yeah, so I am very curious how you feel about that answer.
I feel, I feel good about part of it and then part of it I'm not sure about.
Well, what are you not sure about? Yes.
Well, when it comes to the part of, so what's the point of waiting out for the cure? It would depend on, to me, it would depend on how you got that answer. And when I say that, because, you know, I, I would look to God to see, he said there was no cure, Charles, there's not, it's not gonna happen, because with God, everything is possible, so I think they would find a cure. So that part I'm not sure about, but the other part where it says, we are all only on the earth a temporary time, I believe that, and before we will be united spiritually, I believe that part.
Well, I think that this is very typical of how someone who is in the business that he's in would answer this question.
Yeah.
He sees this from a completely different perspective than what most people would see it from.
Right.
You know, as, as a person who handles death on a daily basis,
Right.
He, he could not see this any other way. So I don't fault him at all for what he said. I, I totally get it where he's coming from. You know, my reservation on this is, what would be the point of waiting for a cure? You know, I'm, I am like a forever, forever optimist. I probably would wait for the cure. You know, I wouldn't want to see anything suffer.
Right.
So I would nurture it, I would try to find ways to make it feel better, you know, the zombie, not the child-ish, however we're wording that, but, but I mean, I can see where he's coming from, that that, you know, that is not always possible.
My favorite part of the whole answer is the beginning, really? Question mark. You can just see his eyes rolling as he's having to answer this.
Well, if you know Jeff, you understand why we had to ask this question. Yes, yes, yes.
Definitely.
So is there anything else in here that we want to talk about? For Mr. Ryan, did you see anything else that really jumped out at you?
Again, he says there's really no critical issues to jump on at any given instant about the question, what do you see most urgent?
Oh, urgencies of the community? Right, right, right.
Right, and, and he seems to agree with Aaron.
Well, then, but he goes on to say that certainly there are big issues ahead.
But not, nothing critical. Anything he's pushing for now?
Well, I think he says, we have a pretty well-rounded and nice town that we should take pride in and celebrate.
I like his better paying jobs for more citizens. I agree, that's important.
That's a political answer.
I'll vote for that.
Yeah, we would all vote for that, would it be possible? Yeah. You know, I think, he says everyone can be working together with a good attitude. You know, that's a little bit far-reaching. You know, not everybody works together and not everybody has a good attitude about it, but the fact that he's going in with that thought in mind, you know, I think, he's a new candidate, you know, he's, he's, he's coming at it from an approach of sensibility and hope, and I think that that's probably a good way to start out.
And there's your optimism.
There it is. Hey, thank you very much, Carl Ryan, for your responses and we will be right back with more from the scene.
Hi, I'm Teresa Terry and I would like to inform you about Swedish massage. Swedish massage is a general overall rub-down. It can be done with light pressure or more deep pressure depending on your preference. Massage is a great reliever for sore, tired, or stressed muscles. Massage is very beneficial in helping you to relax. It is given using lotions and essential oils. Why not give yourself a time to unwind and relax or give a friend or family member a gift certificate for a massage? They will love it. If you have any questions about massage, please call me during the day, Monday through Thursdays, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. On Fridays, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The number is 785-823-2651.
Hi, and welcome back. So our third candidate we will be speaking about is Dr. Trent Davis. And his first question was, what form of education, training, and/or experience qualifies you for a city commissioner seat? How did he answer, Shawna?
And he responded with a long paragraph, but we're gonna paraphrase just a little bit and tell you that Mr. Trent Davis is a neurologist. And he's done a lot of servicing some boards. He's a past member of the Salina Cable Access TV Board, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Arts and Humanities Commission, and the Salina, Salina County Board of Health, and he was the chairman of that board from 2012 to 2013. He is the president of Salina branch of the NAACP, a past president of the medical staff of Salina Regional Health Center, and he is current Salina City Commissioner. So he has done a lot of things at this point in time, but one of the things that he says in here as far as his training, experience qualifications to be a city commissioner is very short and sweet. Listen, learn, and lead. What do you think about that?
I think those three things are like great, if you can follow all three of them.
Yeah, are those the golden words to being a good, a good leader?
Well, obviously, I mean, he's currently sitting, sitting on the board for county commissioner, so obviously, he has learned something from his past experience. And I think listening to the community, learning from the community, and then leading our community, I think is a great way to advocate yourself as city commissioner. And I know as his job, I've actually been in a CM with my husband, and he does listen. He does a great job sitting down and listening and knowing how to, how to fix your ailments and being very professional and then leading you to a resolution. So I think that he actually does listen, learn, lead.
Okay, so guys, do you think that experience is, is more important than education?
In some cases, I do, I do. I think you, you go, you gravitate towards your strengths, so.
I think he gave you a leadership answer because those are like the three Ls of leadership and the listening, the learning, and those are all the things that we gotta do. So he's given you a quality that he can lead the community as, in short, is what he's trying to say, I think. But we'd have to ask him, but I'm almost sure that's what he's saying.
Well, granted, he has a lot of experience here. You know, does it take a lot of training to be a city commissioner?
I don't think it does.
I mean, there's no class that you go to, right?
No.
City Commissioner 101?
Nope.
Right?
No, but I, and it, and I don't think that it takes a lot, but it probably gives him, all these boards probably give him some experience to what's really going on in the community.
Right, insight as to what steps you need to take to make things better, right?
I love the fact that you could be a neurologist or you could work at Applebee's to be city commissioner, it doesn't matter.
Right, that's right.
I think that's fantastic.
It's about what you want to do for the community and in the community.
Correct.
So what else did we ask him?
What?
So number two, what do you see as the most urgent need in our community?
I would like to paraphrase this, but I really can't because I really need to, to get to the meat and potatoes of this answer, read it all the way through. He says this, reversing the trend of citizen apathy with respect to the cultural, social, and economic future of our city, that is the most important need or urgent need he sees in the community. As the number of lower-paying jobs increases, the demand for public funding of the safety net increases, eventually increasing taxes. Fewer and fewer will be forced to support more and more. Securing and protecting jobs that will support homeownership will eventually lead to increased spending of disposable income to support education, the arts, and recreation in Salina. USD 305 will continue to be the backbone of future growth in Salina. Citizen involvement in setting Salina's present and future course will become apparent. This is what I thought was very interesting. Our 25 to 35-year-old generation should be enticed back to Salina to buy their homes here, raise families here, and build new businesses or expand established ones. Our 65 to 85-year-olds should not have to consider relocating to find optimal housing, recreational options, and cultural options. Singles should not consider Salina a social desert. The reason I find that interesting is because I have two children who left Salina for that very reason. You know, in their twenties, they were, they probably would say that they considered Salina a social desert. So I, I like the way that he's thinking here as far as getting the community built back up so that it does entice the younger generation to come back, to stay here, to raise families, and our seniors to stick around and, you know, be the solid backbone that we need to learn from.
What really excites me is that he mentions USD 305 and how that will be continued to be the future of Salina.
I knew that would be a good one for you, Kristy.
Exactly. He, he must know me well.
Yeah.
And you already, you know mine too, right?
Of course I do.
Yeah.
You could just see it all, all over there.
This guy's on top of it.
Okay, so do you think he went like on our Facebook pages and looked to see what we liked and then created this answer for the three of us?
I think he did.
Just so we would be impressed?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. Did you do that, Trent?
Hey, that's pretty awesome.
That is. Way to go, guy.
It's probably, all of those things are like, it's, it's like, really, some of the needs in the community though.
It is.
It is.
It's just like
It's legit.
It's not, not that I would, I like selling homes and bring them all back as fast as you can.
Yeah.
But, but I mean, he really, I think he really hit it with that, with that answer there.
He did. That's why I could not paraphrase, just had to read it all.
That's right. So then we ask him, what do you like most about Salina?
Charles?
I'll never, I've never had to make more than three phone calls to find my kids. Usually only two calls. I can accidentally leave my briefcase in the parking lot, drive off and come back 45 minutes later and it's still there. People speak when they pass on the sidewalk, they, the saying, there are no strangers, only friends we haven't met yet, describes life here.
Aww.
And that's true.
It is true.
That is true. I mean, my mom, she's like, she lives with me now and she's like, I left my doors unlocked and I didn't have to worry.
Yes.
She's coming from Kansas City, you don't leave your doors unlocked for five seconds. And she said, I was in the grocery store and I had my purse and I didn't even have it strapped to my arm. I was just, you know, it's just, you don't have to worry about, like you do in the, the cities part, so.
Yeah, that's very true. There, there is more of a, of a close-knit, small-town mentality, you know, help your neighbor kind of thing. You know, we talked about that on one of our other shows, you know, about the RAC Day, you know, the, the kindness thing, you know, be kind to your neighbor. And, and I think that's what he's getting at here. And I think that does, that is what draws people to, to smaller towns is, is kind of that, that friend, good, good old boy kind of mentality.
Right, exactly. It has to do with our, so what if we are not caught up to the rest of the nation? I think that is why we still have our down-home beliefs and we're still friendly to people on the street and we don't steal things from each other. It is because it's not so rush, 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 go, go, go. We are in the Midwest, we are the heart of the nation, and it still shows.
Yeah, we just need, need more places to shop here for clothes and furniture and, you know, Pier One and those kinds of things, you know, that's all we're really missing, right?
No, jobs.
Oh, jobs, well, that would be jobs.
We need the jobs first, so that we can, well, the jobs would bring the store, or those places you're talking about here.
Yeah, yeah.
But, and in this question also, and I said it earlier, this is a great place to raise kids, and, and he hit on that too.
He did.
And that's, and I think that's a real, that's a real plus for Salina. I mean, that's one of the reasons I came back here, so I think that's a real positive. He's, he's like, good politician, because he's hitting.
Good politician or a good person? Just a good person.
That's right. That's what we're trying to get at here.
That's what we're trying to figure out.
Is it about politics or is it about the person?
Probably both.
Right.
You can relate to this, we can all relate to these, these answers on, on, on the right level, you know?
Right.
I mean, I do not know, I don't know Dr. Davis, you know, but, but after reading through his, his, his answers, I feel like I do, so.
And what else is super impressive is, if you try and get an appointment with this guy, you have to wait like six months. But then, we sent them this questionnaire two weeks ago and we get this fantastic, three-page document.
Yeah.
The guy doesn't have hardly any time and he is still available to answer our questions for our Awesome The Scene show.
That's right. So let's go on because I cannot wait to hear what he said about the animal in the woods.
All right, so, Dr. Davis is walking in the woods and he sees an animal. What kind of animal is it and how does he interact with the animal?
So here's what he says, "I'm from the city and though I love the woods, any animal I see, be it a small rabbit, a big deer, or a coyote, will look like a gorilla to me. I will quietly pick up a big stick, not make eye contact, and act like I don't see it. After all, I'm in his backyard, not the other way around. Oh, and on the other hand, if I was at the ocean or the beach, I'd get my frisbee ready and say, bring it on."
Just like you, right?
Yeah.
Right, Charles?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so let's analyze this on the whole problem thing, okay? So here's what I see. He takes on all kinds of different problems. Obviously, in his line of work, he does. From the small rabbit to the big deer to the coyote, to, you know, to Godzilla, to whatever, he takes all that on and, and he has to deal with those things as they come, depending on how much effort he has to put into solving that problem. Sometimes it's a big stick, sometimes it's don't make eye contact, sometimes it's just getting out the frisbee and, and hitting it head-on, you know, with that kind of an attitude, so.
And I love how he says that we're in their backyard, that we invaded their space, really.
Right.
So I think that's a great answer.
It is.
Yeah. You don't mess with nature, what's already there.
Right.
We came into their space.
And does that also allude to the fact that sometimes, you know, the problems he deals with are not his own?
Exactly.
That's right, exactly.
Yep.
Yep.
I agree.
So how does he relax after a tough day?
Oh, this is fun.
Says, A, sit in my recliner, no sound, and thank God for, and thank God for giving me direction to get as far as I did. And then B was, did I mention, go to the beach with my frisbee?
He did.
And here is, I don't pronounce all these, I know Mozart.
Let me help.
Go ahead.
Tchaikovsky, Mozart, and one that we can't pronounce, does that tell you a little bit about us? And Whitney Houston, so he likes to listen to music. My family knows, no one can say anything bad about Whitney around me.
Love it.
Wow. Then the D is, makes plans to return fire the next day. Learn from today, be glad in it, and plan for tomorrow.
So what does this tell you? It tells me a lot.
Right, I think there's different types of relaxing for different types of days. And I think he covered the bases.
Yeah, he did.
He did, and especially the reflection part of things. You know, to sit down and reflect on what was good about today, what was bad about today, and how am I gonna fix it tomorrow? I think that's a really good approach.
Agreed. All right.
Next?
The next question. This is our favorite. If there was a zombie apocalypse and your child was a zombie, would you kill it to put it out of misery or keep it alive in hopes of a cure?
Wow.
He gave a good answer too, I think. He said, now you see why I wouldn't have been in the woods in the first place in question four. And I would never give up on my child. If my child asked me to kill him or her to end their suffering, I would not be giving up on my child, only on my desire to have him around for the rest of my life. In a strange sort of way, I would be proud of him or her in taking the courage to make such a decision. As a parent, all of us hope we're never, ever in this situation.
So true.
Wow, yeah, very true. Now, you know, we talked about what answers are political and what answers are from the heart.
That's from the heart.
I definitely do not see that as being anything but straight from the heart.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Very nice.
I have to agree with you this time.
It's a first.
I love that he said
It's a first on the scene!
I would never give up on my child, which makes me think he would never give up on Salina either.
Right, exactly.
That's what stuck out the most to me.
That there's always hope, you know, that there's always something we can do to make things better. Yeah, very, very good.
Very nice, Dr. Davis.
Wow, thank you so much, Dr. Davis, for your responses. Really, really appreciate that.
All right, are we ready to move on to our last candidate?
We are ready.
Who submitted answers? And thanks again for taking the time out of your day to do this. We really appreciate it.
We really do. It's been fun so far and here we go.
Okay, so now we're on to Carl Ryan.
No.
Randall Hardy.
Randall Hardy.
I don't have his papers.
Oh, well, I do and I will lead this discussion.
Sounds great.
Okay, so we ask Randall Hardy, what form of education, training, or experience qualifies you for a city commissioner?
And he said, I have a bachelor's degree from Oral Roberts University and a master's, master of degree in business administration from the University of Kansas. I also have two years of experience on the city commission.
So once again, education or experience?
Hmm.
Well, he's got both of them though, right?
He's got both of them, that's for sure. But I still say that experience is gonna trump education when you're working with people.
I agree. You follow your passion.
Yeah. So we also ask him, what do you see as your most urgent need in our community? And he said,
I think the most pressing need for our city is to bring more better-paying jobs to Salina. What, let's see, what'd he say again?
Do you want my bifocals?
He said, bring, bring, he said, wait, I just, when I see that part where it says, better-paying jobs to Salina.
That gets you excited. That gets you excited.
It's like, "Better-paying jobs to Salina."
Yes, yes.
Whenever they say that, that's like, the ultimate.
Uh-huh, the ultimate answer.
Good thing. You just wanna just focus on better-paying jobs to Salina. That means more house sales.
Of course.
Well, sure.
It's always what's good for you.
No, those stores you were talking about.
Those stores, yeah.
Better-paying job, brings in the stores, brings in, and the education, that brings in more money to be spent on it. So it's not just me, it's all of us.
I think one thing that we've learned from all four of our candidates' answers is that everybody kinda has the same feeling about that. The better-paying jobs, you know, bringing the, more of the commerce in and that kind of thing, so.
Sure.
That's obviously a, a joint feeling.
Definitely.
Yeah. So, we also ask him about the animal.
Oh.
Animal in the woods. What is it, and how do you interact? And here's what he said. "I see a black bear. I've been camping several years now in national parks and have yet to see one. This type of animal calls all the shots, so I would just tiptoe around it."
So he's got some big problems.
He's got some big problems, he's got some black bear problems, yeah, yeah.
And maybe he's just gonna bite off a little bit at a time, tiptoe around it, just handle what he's got to at that time.
And that's not a bad, that's not a bad way to approach things, is it?
Not at all.
You know, sometimes you can only eat an elephant a bite at a time.
Exactly.
So I see nothing wrong with that. Do you see it as a political answer, Charles?
I, I don't, but I, I'm wondering how he's gonna tip around that bear.
Well, he doesn't know, he's never seen one.
Yeah, and just, just the other night, I just happened to watch how a bear was attacking, and they don't play.
Oh, man. Careful, Randall.
As he tiptoes, I could just, I can already see it.
Oh, poor guy. Don't let those bear problems do that to you. No, no, no. So how does he relax after a tough day? Well, I can definitely relate to this. Kick back on the deck. Yeah. You left out the beverage part, which I can really relate to, but I like the kicking back on the deck thing.
Sure.
Yeah.
He was politically correct in not mentioning the beverage part.
You think?
Ah, you know.
I don't know, this is supposed to be, you know, not, not so much, not so much political, but personal.
Sure.
Yeah, well, maybe he doesn't do the beverage thing.
Maybe he heard our last show about our liquor tax.
Yeah.
But you can balance it from there, so.
That's right. Well, soon you'll be able to go right down to Dylan's and get your beverage, so what's the, what's the big deal?
Terrible. Tax it. I'm still on that. I think we could make a lot of money.
Oh, yeah.
Better-paying jobs, sell that money.
There you go.
There you go, selling those houses.
That would be good.
Higher commissions.
Well, and then that means what? More department stores, which brings in more for the education, so y'all should be right there with me.
You should run for city commissioner.
I thought about that at one time, but it's not, that's not my.
He's not a candidate this year.
Not this year.
No, not this year, ladies and gentlemen.
No, not at all.
So we also ask Mr. Hardy, "If you could select one person to meet tomorrow, who would it be and why?" And what did he say, Charles?
Well, I've got, I don't even know if I could.
Oh, I'll, I'll take over. Hop in here. He said, "I would like to meet the Pope. I admire his independent mind in his leadership of the church." Now, does that mean that Mr. Hardy's Catholic?
That's where I was going.
I don't know, I mean, does it?
I don't know, so there would, that would be safe to assume there would be a beverage on that porch then.
Oh, well, it's probably wine. It would be wine, wouldn't it?
It would, delicious.
Of course, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, just because he wants to meet the Pope doesn't mean that he's Catholic.
That's right, we are assuming, we don't know that for sure.
We are.
But I was just, you know, gonna throw that out there just in case.
I wouldn't mind meeting the Pope, I mean, just to talk to him.
Be very interesting.
I think that would be really good, and I'm not Catholic.
I'm not Catholic either, and I think the man is amazing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
And all the languages he knows how to speak, and the whole nine, I mean, wow.
And just living in the Vatican.
Yeah.
What an amazing place.
And all the stuff that he had to go through just to be elected to the position that he's in now.
Okay, well, let's talk about that then. Experience or education to be the Pope?
Ooh.
I think you need both.
Agreed.
Okay, so you need to know all about the whole Bible thing, and the doctrine, and all of that. And then you also have to have the experience of working with people and.
Yeah, you do.
Okay.
Lot of hoops to jump through to be the Pope.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I guess the city commission job just won't work out for the Pope?
No, probably not.
Okay, that's cool.
At least not this year.
Not this year.
He'll run against you when you decide.
Yeah.
I'm not even seeing that, that's, that would be probably a very likely thing.
Close race.
Okay, so we also ask him.
Go ahead.
Okay. "If you could be a cartoon character, who would it be and why?" I love this answer.
He says, "It's interesting that you referred to..." Oh, I got the wrong, wow. He liked to be, wow. "I would like to be Superman."
Woo!
"There's a lot of messes out there that I would like to fix."
Isn't that a great answer?
That is a good answer.
Superman.
I love that.
I'd be Superman.
You would be Superman?
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
I think it'd be fantastic.
No, Superwoman.
Well, I could be a man.
That would not be good.
That's a whole nother show, I don't even wanna go there. Yeah. Okay, Kristy, no, you can't be a man on this show.
I could be a Superman, sometimes.
Sometimes?
You know.
We would like, I would really like to see how your, your husband would answer that question.
Well, it's not super, you know, gender-specific. Anybody can, can be a super person and help the community and save lives and.
Super person?
A super person.
You said a Superman.
Well, man, woman, we're all people.
We all put our pants on the same way.
That's right.
That's what I tell my kids.
No gender is better than the other.
That's right.
So the "it" works in there too, then, right?
Did you hear that? That's right.